Do we have attention please? Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Connie Anne Mack. Robert McLaughlin. Barbara Kaminski. And someone very special to our borough, our former borough clerk, Mary Jo Root. Thank you.
Mr. Wellworth, roll call.
Mr. Heller absent. Ms. Fovio?
Present.
Mrs. Heller?
Present.
Mr. Duplikie?
Here.
Ms. Sewicki?
Present.
Mr. Pappas?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Present.
Mayor Leslie?
Here.
Mr. Wills?
Here.
Mr. Catania?
Here.
Mr. Wellworth, Mrs. Boyle. Chief Montella. Acting Chief Havich. Roll call complete.
Ms. Smalls? From Coburn Elementary?
Good evening. I'm a little bit sorry for this. Good evening. My name's Nicole Small, for those of you that don't know me. And I became principal of Coburn Elementary on July 1st after being the school counselor for 17 years.
Congratulations.
Thank you. As a Pendelco grad and a Brookhaven Borough resident, I'm very happy to be principal of Coburn, and I love this community. So I wanted to catch you up on what's been going on for the last couple of months. After the start of school on 9/3 of 2024, we had Fire Prevention Week. Thank you to the Brookhaven Fire Department. Coburn Elementary students from kindergarten through 5th grade enjoyed an engaging educational visit during Fire Prevention Week. The department provided a safety lesson in the gymnasium, followed by hands-on learning outside where the students explored the fire trucks, ambulances, and firefighting equipment. Each student received a fire hat and an activity to reinforce the lesson. It was a fantastic day for our students. We extend our gratitude to the Brookhaven Police Department for supporting Coburn Elementary during our initial lockdown drill on October 22nd. The officers provided an additional layer of oversight, ensuring that our lockdown practices were carried out as safely and as effectively as possible. This event featured a spooky trail, a fall-themed games, trick-or-treat lane with teachers handing out candy, and an inflatable corn maze, all organized by our incredible PTL. Families joined in the fun, creating a joyful school-community event. Special thanks to the Brookhaven Police Department for ensuring everyone's safety throughout the evening. On October 11th, we proudly celebrated Veterans Day with a heartfelt ceremony. Students invited their veteran family members to attend the Student Land Event, which included patriotic songs for our chorus and a special recognition of 40 veterans from various branches of the armed forces. The morning concluded with a breakfast for veterans and their student host. It was a truly memorable experience and celebration for all involved. In the beginning of November, we had our Coburn PTL organizing a fantastic scholastic book fair. Students, staff, and families learned, loved exploring, and purchasing their favorite books, promoting the love for reading across our school community. The Brookhaven Police Department, Coburn Elementary, and the Domestic Abuse Project of Delaware County joined forces for a meaningful donation drive this November. Generous contributions included gift cards, new twin-size bedding, pillows, towels, washcloths, and full-size toiletries collected to support individuals served by the Domestic Abuse Project. These much-needed items will be delivered to the organization, providing comfort and care to those in need. Currently, the Coburn Elementary Student Council is hosting a toy drive from December 2nd to December 12th, encouraging students to bring new unwrapped toys to school and place them in collection bins located in the main office. All donations will benefit AI DuPont Hospitals for Children. And last but not least, follow us on Instagram. Stay connected with the Coburn Elementary community by following us at @CoburnES for updates, events, activities, and celebrations. I wish everyone a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Ms. Small.
That opens up our first public discussion. First public discussion.
Hi, Sue Colt, Melvin Drive. I wanted to thank Mr. Burke for finding my dad's hero's banner. It took a while, but he found it, and I am truly grateful. The other thing is Eaton Park. There are seven dead trees in Eaton Park that Popeyes was supposed to be in care of, and they've been dead for probably about 18 months now. Or when it was built, how long ago was Popeyes built? I'm not too sure, but I think it's been a long time because I walk there every day. So I didn't know when they were going to... I know now is out, but what's their timeline for replacing the trees that have died? Does anybody know from Popeyes?
So we were working on that. I know Tom Dykes from the rec board. We have been in conjunction with trying to either get them replaced or coming up with another solution. We're working with the engineer because we still have, I believe, funding that they still owe, meaning Popeyes, to the borough. So it is in the works. Obviously, we cannot do it now because of the weather, but yes. So I'm not sure if it's going to be replaced with the seven trees or if we're going to replace it with something that's a little bit more conducive for that space. So it is being worked on.
Is there any way now, or I'm just asking, if the trees can be pulled out?
I don't see why not because we can use it for shipping.
Totally. The other thing is, Reed is through a, or placed, a large light post on the hill of Eaton Park. And it's sitting there on the hill. You know, it leaves covering it now. Is there any way that can be picked up and discarded?
Where is it?
Exactly. If you're walking on the path of Eaton Park and you're going behind or diagonal to Reed's, there's a big white, long lamp pole.
Just laying there.
Just laying there.
We'll have to check because I know that portion of that property is owned by the school district, so we'll look at it. We'll have Public Works look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll check with Public Works.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public discussion? Okay, moving along. Police, active police chief, Tim Havich.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, chief.
Just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody and hope you have a happy Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year as well. So for the month of November 2024, the officers of the police department initiated or were assigned 710 calls for service, a total of seven criminal cases and 15 non-traffic, where summary cases were filed with the district attorney during the month. Some noteworthy calls where we took 15 reported thefts, one reported simple assault, one reported vandalism. We had 27 suspicious conditions, 26 disturbances or domestic disputes. We handled 31 vehicle crashes in the month. November and December are notoriously our highest traffic accident month for sure. Holidays get everyone all riled up, and we handle a lot of accidents in November and December. We also did 195 security checks, and we recovered one stolen vehicle, which I'll talk about a little bit as well. There were 20 arrests of adults in the month, four juvenile arrests, 37 citations issued, and 29 traffic warnings issued for the month. The department, we did assist the county on Election Day. The county had a plan for all these local drop boxes, so we assisted the county. They had a very good program with the election officials on the county, and we provided an escort. The two county officials that came to retrieve the ballots from the drop box escorted them down to the clearinghouse where they were doing the counting. We thought it was really important to assist the county there and make sure that the ballots got to the counting location safely and without issue, which went really smooth. This month, we received a generous donation from Brookhaven Bay Ruth Baseball to our Bulletproof Fest fund. I wanted to thank them for their generous donation. As you know, Bulletproof Fest are expensive. They're getting more expensive, just like everything else, and we use this money to help offset the costs for that. And I did refer to stolen vehicles. So we sent a community alert on November 30th to stay away from the area up at Chester Wood Authority Field, Chapsack Brookhaven. I'm sure some of you saw on social media, there was a very heavy police presence there. This all stemmed from a motor vehicle pursuit that was initiated by another agency nearby, resulting in following a vehicle theft in the city of Chester. So the subject failed to yield to police, and the departments involved in that initiated a pursuit with the car. Ultimately, after leading him on a pretty lengthy pursuit, the car happened to crash on Duttmill Road through the fence at the Chester Wood Authority property. So then suddenly the call became our problem, which was fine. We handled it. We were able to set up a perimeter with our officers and officers from the county and the surrounding agencies, really quickly set up a perimeter there, and we had assists from K-9 officers from Ridley Township and Ridley and Polkcroft. Quickly, a county employee with a drone and Chester police officer with a drone were on scene within five minutes of the accident, and drones were in the air. It was very beneficial and probably hastened the speed with which we caught this person. So thankfully, because of the good police work with all the agencies and the quick assistance from the county and the other law enforcement agencies, we were able to take the person into custody with him not being injured and no officers being injured. The car that he stole was pretty damaged, but you know, it was better than other parties being injured as well. I know there was some witness footage that was kind of circulating on social media and kind of went wild. I just want to make it clear that until the car crashed in Brookhaven, we didn't have any involvement in this incident. It wasn't our choice to chase this car. It wasn't our choice to bring this person into Brookhaven. That's just the nature of how it works sometimes. But thankfully, the incident ended here, and we were able to take the guy into custody, which was a job well done by everybody. So, community relations for the month. I had the pleasure of hosting the Bear Scouts from Brookhaven Cub Scout Pack 493 at headquarters on November 12th. They're the 3rd grade boys in the local Boy Scout Pack or Cub Scout Pack. I helped the boys complete their forensics adventure. As part of this, we learned about the science of forensics and specifically like fingerprinting and everything like that. We actually developed and lifted latent prints using processes we would use in the field, you know, at an active crime scene, which was a really great experience for these boys. They also, we took copies of their fingerprints and gave it to the boys to take home along with some information so they could identify their own fingerprints, whether they were, you know, an arch or a loop or a whirl, you know, just something cool. And they can compare with mom and dad and see that everybody's got different fingerprints. It's a really great program. I always enjoy having the ability to do that. I started doing this with the kids when my now 17-year-old, who's in 11th grade, was in 3rd grade, so it's a very good thing. We really enjoy doing that. Obviously, we had the holiday parade in November, our biggest community event by far. We were very happy to participate in that and have good support, not only from our department and surrounding departments, but the fire police in Delaware County were instrumental with making sure all the traffic posts were covered and everything went smoothly and safely. It was a good time, and we always enjoy that event and being able to see everybody. Ms. Small talked about our partnership with Coburn that we did. We paired up with them in November to help with our fun drive for the Domestic Abuse Project in Delaware County. We picked up those items from the school on November 27th. We filled up the back of two police cars with all the items the school and we collected, which was really great. We actually had a member, an employee from the Domestic Abuse Project go with us to the school to retrieve the items, to photo op with the school and everything. It was a great turnout. She was just overwhelmed with the support that she showed, the school showed, and she was adamant how beneficial the supplies they were given were going to be to the citizens that they serve at the Domestic Abuse Project all throughout Delaware County. We are still doing the donation drive at the police department. We'll continue to collect items until December 15th. Ms. Small mentioned, but just as a reminder, Domestic Abuse Project is looking for gift cards to grocery stores or Target or Walmart, as well as twin-size bedding, which would have to be new, pillows, new toiletries, full-size toiletries, towels, washcloths, that type of stuff. They have to be new because they give them to people that they put up in their safe houses, and they don't want them using, you know, used items for that. Delaware County Domestic Abuse explained to me that this is all-in-down empowerment of people that are survivors of domestic abuse. So being able to give somebody a gift card or supplies to fill up, you know, and make the safe house they may be staying in a home is really important to them. I just think it's a really great thing that we can support because we lean on Domestic Abuse Project to provide us with all kinds of things all the time. But middle of the night, we'll call them up, and someone always answers and has something for us, which is great. And then finally, for training for the month, Detective Wetton attended SWAT training, his monthly SWAT training in November. Myself and Officer Duff attended defensive tactics instructor training for the month. This was a recertification for me and a new certification for Officer Duff. This allows us to do a lot of our training in-house with our less lethal options, baton and OC and our, complete our state requirements for handcuffing and defensive tactics, which are all things that we need to do. Having trainers in-house allows us to have more flexibility with the scheduling and saves money as well. Also Sergeant Eastman attended police supervisory and service training, and Sergeant Eastman, Detective Wetton, and Officer Pazley completed range qualifications during the month as well. And we've got a bunch of training scheduled in December to get everything completed by the end of the year, and we'll start next year and keep on moving. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Our chief, Montella. Thanks, chief. Chief? My apologies. Seconds good sometimes. Evening, chief. Evening, council residents. Brookhaven Fire Company's November 2024 fire report. We had four fire incidents in the borough, 19 non-fire, 25 calls for mutual aid, four training sessions for a total of 52 for the month, 585 calls for the year. We had $5,000 loss on contents in the borough. We had $300,000 of property endangered for the month. For the year, we've had $2,650,000 of property endangered in the borough. No firefighter or civilian injuries for the month. Our manpower, 52 calls, average of 12 firefighters per call, 384 hours of in-service for the month, 3,231 for the year. Four training sessions, average of 27 firefighters for training sessions, 221 hours logged of training for the month, 1,759 hours for the year. Incidents responded to in Brookhaven Borough. We had three building fires in the borough. 4940 Madison Drive, that ended up being a heater issue in combination with electrical wiring issue. 3734 Susan Lane, that ended up being a backup battery on the electrical panel for a Verizon Box. And 6901 Hilltop Drive, that was a culinary mishap. Three accidents in the borough, Brookhaven and Edgemont Avenue, Brookhaven and Burke Avenue, and 4417 Edgemont Avenue. We had two pedestrian struck calls, one at Brookhaven Road and Chandler Drive, and one at 3770 Susan Lane, but resulted in injuries to the patients. We assisted Aston Township on a gas leak at Sun Valley High School. Assisted Rocky Run Fire Company on a large brush fire along the railroad tracks on Pennell Road. Assisted Chester Fire Department on a second alarm building fire at 2821 West 9th Street, and assisted Chester Township on a building fire at 1216 Angle Street. Our training for the month, we had a certified instructor come in. We had a large area search training class. We used Our Lady of Charity for the training class last Tuesday night. Very good class for our company. We had a driver training class, in-classroom driver training class, and we had a forcible entry drill with our forcible entry door. We just recently had six firefighters pass the structural burn class in Bucks County. They are now going to take their certification tests in the spring to be pro-board certified. We had one of our firefighters in our junior firefighter program, you guys know him, Stephen Davish. He just passed his five months of training in Fire One at Delaware County Training Center. He just had his structural burn last Saturday, and he also will be getting his national certification hopefully in the next two or three weeks. Our Safer Grant outside for recruitment and retention. You guys see our new LED sign installed on the side of the firehouse. I'm sure everybody saw it. Pretty big, it's nice. It's for recruiting. We can use it for recruiting and all that, but with the help of the borough getting us that sign, we appreciate it. Also, good news for the residents, our board of directors. We were able to secure an ambulance services agreement with Rocky Run Fire Company, which is Middletown Township's EMS provider. So that protection is, if we're tied up and they come and answer a call and transport any of our residents to the hospital, if you're in our ambulance subscription, they will honor that, and not any money would have to come out of your pocket to pay the bill, just what your insurance cost. Huge protection. It was a good thing, really nice thing the fire company got that sign. And if anybody didn't know, we have one signed with Aston Township as well, and we have a gentleman's agreement with Crozier Hospital. So trying to get our residents the most protection possible in this day and age with the ambulance crisis. Ambulances are scarce out there, and we're answering calls in everybody else's towns, and when we're out doing that, other people have to back us up. So we're trying to get everybody the most protection for your subscription, so there's no fees to get involved. So happy for our board to get that accomplished and get that agreement signed. The fire company will bring Santa around on Candy Cane Day. It'll be Saturday, 12/14, from noon to 4:00 p.m. That concludes the fire end of the report. Before I start on the ambulance report, Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year. Enjoy your holidays with your families. Our EMS report for the month of November, our ambulance answered 208 calls for service. We transported 125 people to the hospital. Of those transports, 117 were ALS transports, 91 were BLS, and the ambulance finishing up so far this month, 2,792 calls for the year so far. So it's been a little busy.
Chief, I just had a question.
Yep.
That fire that was on Susan Lane, you said it was related to a battery?
Yes. People have, you have the Verizon Boxes in your basement, power goes out, they try to keep your stuff powered up, they have a battery backup. Battery just, it's over time and just kind of shorted out in the house. Little odor, you smell smoke, did the right thing, called a fire. You know, the stain agent batteries, they're dangerous out there, batteries. So always monitor any batteries you have.
Thank you.
Your telephones and all that stuff, monitor that stuff because that can cause a hazard. If they're wore out, just replace it.
Is there a life, is there like a lifespan on those batteries? I just, like just on those Verizon?
Verizon, when they install them, it's kind of a maintenance item. We actually had a deep blast, you know, we do their smoke detectors in our house. Can you change it for me? And we do help with that. They replace them and buy the same battery at the battery warehouse. If they go low, they usually start the, kind of like a smoke detector, you usually do get an indicator if you let them go too long.
Thanks, chief.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief. Mayor Leslie.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I would like to congratulate our Officer James Kelso and his wife on their new baby girl that they had in November.
That's good news.
Second, Dan, happy birthday. Fire Marshal Leslie, happy birthday. It'll be Wednesday, and Sherri is the sixth. So happy birthday. We've got three birthdays this week. And then everyone, enjoy your holiday season, and I would like to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and healing New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Wills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President, and a most good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the December 2nd solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in the event any members of the public would like to review it. I do have a few action items for Borough Council's consideration this evening. One is to consider a two-year contract extension with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 27 on behalf of the Brookhaven Borough Police Officers. The proposed agreement, again, would provide a wage increase of 4.85% effective January 1st of 2025, and another 4.85% wage increase effective January 1st, 2026. The agreement would also provide that Juneteenth is now to be included as a paid holiday for all full-time police officers. All other issues of the collective bargaining agreement would remain as is. And so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt said agreement.
So moved. Hold on a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second action item on the agenda concerns consideration of a resolution authorizing a 21st partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements associated with the residences at Brookhaven Glen Land Development Project. The developer has requested a partial escrow release. The Borough Engineer has reviewed that particular request and is recommending a release in the amount of $54,907.99. And so again, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt said resolution.
Did we, Charles, did we address Chris's concerns around the dog park with the railing and some of those other issues that were supposed to be addressed when she came to all of our meetings, when they were developing the board?
That has not been addressed. This would be a partial release. That money would still be held. I'll tell the council whether they want to release this or hold it.
Did we address the curb concern that we had? Do we know? Because there were some of the...
They repaved, they repaved some of the parking areas.
And weren't we satisfied with that?
Some residents were, some weren't.
The height of the curb, I understand, the height of the curb is a standard. The standard is 6'8" inches high, and their language, it's too high. If we make it too low, then somebody could potentially drive it. There's issues with it. I think we stick with the standard 6'8", what I think the plan calls 6 inches, and that's what it is.
So it is what is actually how it's designed to be? And then the other issue that they had was with the dog park and missing a railing because that was another major safety issue.
That is still outstanding.
Would that, this release money can be applied to make that?
We're still holding money for that. We're still holding money for that part of it. This is only a partial release of what's still owed. If council chooses not to release any of it, council's discretion.
Anybody else want to question that?
Like I said, as long as they get resolved, and this is only a partial release, I'm okay with that then.
We need two motions.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item on my agenda concerns the Our Lady of Charity property. Again, this property will be subject to a subdivision application so that the borough may acquire approximately 7.5 acres pursuant to an agreement of sale that the borough executed with Our Lady of Charity and the Archdiocese of Philadelphia back in September of 2024. That proposed subdivision will then there require some zoning relief. And so I have filed two zoning hearing board applications with the borough on behalf of the Our Lady of Charity Parish for off-street parking variance, as well as on behalf of the borough seeking minimum side yard setback variance. Now, the zoning hearing board will be hearing both of these applications at its meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, December 17th at 7:00 p.m., and the public is invited to attend. Next item on my agenda concerns the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority. As Borough Council is aware, the borough has been conditionally approved for a loan up to $1 million to help assist in the financing of the OLC property, and ordinance authorizing that loan... An ordinance authorizing that loan will be scheduled for adoption by Borough Council at its meeting to be held on January the 6th, 2025. Next item on my agenda concerns the open space acquisition that the Borough recently was able to acquire approximately seven acres. Would it open space directly behind the homes on Cambridge Road? I am pleased to advise the Council and the public that a deed of dedication conveying ownership to the Borough was filed with the Delaware County Recorder of Deeds Office on November 25th. The conveyance is a significant acquisition, providing additional open space and passive recreational opportunities for Borough residents. And again, I am pleased to advise that the Borough was able to acquire those seven acres for the sum of $1. Next item on my agenda concerns the responsible contractor ordinance. As Council is aware, I've been providing legal assistance to Councilman Burke, the Ordinance Committee, as well as the Borough Engineer, in drafting the appropriate revisions to the existing responsible contractor ordinance. Again, that ordinance will be subject to a vote for adoption by Borough Council later this evening. Next item, the 2025 Tax Levy Resolution and Sewer and Trash Fee Ordinances. Again, my office has drafted the 2025 Tax Levy Resolution for Borough Council's consideration and adoption at its special meeting to be held on December the 16th at 7:00 P.M. As I indicated to Borough Council earlier this month, Act 51 of 2019 authorizes Boroughs to adopt a tax levy resolution rather than an ordinance when the tax rate is the same or lower than the previous fiscal year. The Borough is not proposing to raise property taxes in 2025. Hence, the Borough will be preparing to adopt a tax levy resolution at its December 19th meeting. I have also drafted for Borough Council the Trash Fee Ordinance and the Sewer Fee Ordinance. Again, they will be subject, again, to adoption by Borough Council at its December 16th meeting. By Councilwoman Sewicki's report, there will be a motion to advertise those two ordinances this evening. And a few non-legal issues. I had the pleasure of attending earlier this month both the Murder Mystery Dinner Theater that benefits the Recreation Department, and also the Craft Fair that benefits the Town Watch program this past weekend. Both events very well attended and highly successful, and very enthusiastic participants. And with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Mr. Katan.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Copy of my report is available for anybody who wants to inspect it. Just one thing I do want to mention is Community Development Block Grant Program. The Borough received notice at the end of the month that Delaware County Council has initiated planning for the program year 2025, Community Development Block Grant Program. County anticipates receiving approximately $3 million in the upcoming program year, which is not scheduled to start until next July. Applications are due January 3rd. The Borough generally has no areas that are eligible under the last census, and the area of the Borough basically bounded by Whitley Road, Brookhaven Road, Edgemont Avenue, and Ridley Creek is now an eligible area, which means it's, we can submit a project for funding. Projects are generally public facility improvements. So I presented Council with a short memo with six potential projects. These are just kind of ideas. There are no particular order priority, just some ideas of projects that can, can be done. We are obligated to hold a public hearing to solicit input on the applications. We have that scheduled for the December 16th special meeting. The advertisement will be in the paper on Thursday. So at, at the meeting, we'll need to solicit public input and then pass a resolution to submit a primary application and then an alternative if so chosen. And that's all I have.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. I'm going to have a motion to approve the October 28, 2024 Cancel Workshop Minutes. So moved.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have a motion to approve the November 4th, 2024 Cancel Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Have a second on that?
Second.
You have it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that's all I have from Mr. Heller. Then we'll start off with Mrs. Sewicki.
Thank you. I do have the bill list for December. General Fund, $159,917.80. Trash Fund is $720. Sewer Fund is $14,720.32, for a total of $175,358.12. So I'm making the motion that we pay these bills this month.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing I do have is we do have the motion to advertise the ordinance for the sewer rental charge for the year 2025. So I do want to make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next motion is a motion to advertise the ordinance establishing a refuse, which is trash collection fee for the year 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Mrs. Fulbey.
The next Business Revitalization Committee meeting will be held next Monday, December 9th at 7:00 P.M. We'll be discussing our marketing and outreach plan for 2025, so we're, we're open to all ideas. Please come and join us. And also, the next Sustainability Committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, December 10th at 7:00 P.M. And we'll actually have a, a guest from the Delaware County Office of Sustainability joining us, Rebecca Yurkovich, and she'll be talking about what sustainability measures are being carried out at the county level, and then also talking about Brookhaven's priorities and how we might be able to work with the county. And that is it for, oh, also, about the, that, that meeting, everyone is welcome to attend, so even if you're not interested in joining the Sustainability Committee on a regular basis, you're free to, to attend any meeting, including this one with Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller.
Thank you. I want to echo a little bit what Jay said about the Town Watch Craft Fair this past weekend. I want to thank Town Watch for their amazing craft fair. John, Lori, the Jims, the Bills, Linda Lynn, Peggy, Bernice, Annie, Dottie, Kathy, Shirley, and Jerry, and obviously Harry for setting up the tables as usual. I want to thank them all. John, if you can thank Luigi for the amazing meatballs as well, I heard that they were great. But it was very well attended, wonderful vendors. It's always great when we're able to give back to our community. All of them were local vendors, so it was a great, great time. The Parade Committee is going to have their wrap-up this Wednesday. The calendar shows it as the 11th, but it's actually this Wednesday, and it will be at 7:30. The Fire Committee will also be meeting this Wednesday, the, the 4th, at 7:00. Sunday is the annual senior luncheon. I'm sure Tom's going to be talking more about it when he comes up during the second public discussion. But the festivities for the senior luncheon is from 1:00 P.M. to 3:00 P.M. That is, and it was a registered event, so come out and help volunteer if you can, because we're always in need of volunteers. And then we'll be wrapping up the year for all of our activities for the rec board with the, the tree lighting ceremony, starting at 6:00. I want to thank Public Works. They did an amazing job on the island. They did a great job with the tree, so please come out and look at all the hard work that they have done. And my secret little tree lighting committee, thank you for your feedback as always. The Technology Committee is going to be meeting the Thursday, the 12th at 7:00. I'm not sure when we'll meet the second time in the month, because both of those Tuesdays are obviously off the calendar. We want to, also want to say happy birthday to Councilman Burke, as well as our Fire Marshal, as well as Mr. Heller, and as well as Dave Evans, who's going to be celebrating his birthday. I want to thank Acting Chief Havik for his diligence in getting us the information that we needed to put out on the alert to keep our residents safe, because that is crucial information to keep our residents safe, because it was very scary, and it was obviously something that was out of our control. Just Brookhaven seems to be a destination location for things like that that happen. So if you do not get the alert and you need to get the alert, please sign up on our website. It does help in emergency situations to keep you safe. It also gives you information on all of our upcoming amazing events that we have throughout the course of the year, and you can access that alert through our website. Lastly, I, I do want to thank Delilah, who is our treasure. She's retiring after the end of this month, and she has done decades as our treasure, and she's done an amazing job. She's always behind the scenes, as a lot of our office staff is, such as Harry, who's always doing amazing things behind the scenes. So we want to make sure that we thank them. And, and just a general thank you to all of our volunteers throughout the course of the year that keep our programs moving, because we cannot do these programs with all of your help. So you're amazing. Thank you, all of you, for all that you've do throughout the course of the year, and we wish you all happy holiday. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Real brief for myself. I attended a public safety meeting, and we had, there's no vehicle accidents with the Borough equipment. That includes the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Public Works. No firemen or policemen were injured, but we do have two Public Works employees that are injured. One, a very minor injury, and the other one, a little bit on the length of time for him to come back will be a little bit more of a distance. Outside of that, I have nothing else to go with, and that leaves me with Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Ordinance Committee met on Thursday, November 21st. One of the topics discussed was showcasing or highlighting ordinance at least, you know, each month or so. So the first ordinance of the month is going to be ice and snow removal, because before you know it, it'll be here. Just a reminder to all residents that after 24 hours of any ice or snow event, all sidewalks and pavements must be cleared for a pedestrian walkway. In the case of sidewalks, the cleared pathway must be the width of the sidewalk. So please be aware of that. I'd like to also note that the Ordinance Committee will not be meeting this month in December, because our preparations for holiday, our normal meeting would be December 19th, so we're going to meet in January instead. And then I do have an action item. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance establishing contractor qualification standards, procedures, and related requirements for public work contracts within the Borough.
Make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I would just like to wish everybody a happy holiday, and hopefully you all had a great Thanksgiving. Hopefully we can reflect, and as the mayor said, hopefully we can have a more peaceful 2025. So thank you very much. That ends my report, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Excuse me. Mr. DePlecky.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, I'll start my report with some reminders I've been putting out there in the last several council sessions with trash and recycling. Please remember Christmas, as well as New Year's Day, follow Wednesdays, our normal scheduled trash pickup days. Please be advised, they will be picked up, just not on those Wednesdays, the subsequent Saturdays, December 28th and January 4th of 2025. Have your recycles and trash ready for pickup those Saturdays. We also have scheduled another electronic and shredding event that'll be in April, April 5th of 2025. So if you keep that in mind down the road, I will continue to remind you folks as the meetings continue. Moving on to Public Works, leaf collection is in progress. Zone 4 was completed the week before last. Zone 1 is this week. It started today. Zone 2 is next week, starting 12, Monday, 12/9. And Zone 3 will be the week of Monday, December 16th. It's in the calendar, just follow, there's a street list, just follow where your street is, and it'll clue you into what zone you will be in. If you don't know, simply call the Borough and they can help you out, decide which pickup you're on. We're moving into the winter season, obviously, and snow could become issues. Laborate a little bit what Dan brought up, Councilman Burke brought up about clearing off your sidewalks. One stipulation is you must have your sidewalk cleared within 24 hours at the end of the snowstorm, so please do that. If at all possible, park your vehicles in your driveway to keep the roads clear for the plows. It's much more efficient and effective with the streets cleared. I understand you maybe can't get all your cars in, but makes it a lot easier on the Public Works guys to plow the roads. Also, the Public Works sent six guys, six employees to continued bucket truck training, and all six passed, so pretty much everybody that works Public Works at this time is certified to use the bucket truck. As I brought up in our last council session, Public Works is currently very short-staffed at this time. We have an injured employee, another seasonal ASIS employee doesn't seem to be working out too well. So at this time, I have some action items that I want to make motions on. The first one, a motion to hire seasonal ASIS employee, Aiden Robbins, at the rate of $21 an hour, with a start date of December 2nd today. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. The next motion I want to make is I want to advertise the possibility of hiring two more full-time Public Works employees. At this point, there's only two working full-time employees. They need more full-time available. I want to make a motion to advertise as soon as possible to hire two new full-time employees. Can I get a motion?
Is that a replacement, or is that just, I mean, how many people do we actually have right now?
There's three full-time, we're scheduled for five.
And there's nobody else?
No.
But you have?
Right now, instead, one of the, Steve Reed is injured. He's hurt pretty bad, no idea when he'll be back or if he'll be back, too. I mean, he's getting up in age a little bit.
Wait, I realize that.
I mean, if, I want to put it in the paper, we need at least one. I was hoping for two, but if we can decide maybe one for the time, I don't have a problem with it. But I want to make a motion to advertise and start interviewing.
So you made the motion?
I'm making the motion to advertise.
Motion to advertise.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I got a call from a resident over the weekend, or late last week, with deer crossing issues. They live on Shepherd Street. And so I talked to the person, her and her mother, and they're requesting a sign, a deer crossing sign, basically on their property. I checked with Public Works, there is already a sign. As you come out of Shepherd Street onto Coburn, it's like right there. So I don't know. I would, said I'd bring it up here if there's a potential to get another sign. I don't know what it costs, I don't think it could be much, but I could talk to Dave, but I don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, because it goes between my house and my neighbors, but we're not the ones that called. It's very interesting.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring up, I said it was a good idea.
There's a buck that runs, runs right between our houses into the woods behind me.
There's two bucks.
And it's unbelievable. And it really scared the neighbor the first time.
So I don't know if, if any? So I don't know, if anybody wants to consider an additional sign, I mean, we could talk about this in December 16th.
It's probably a good idea somewhere on that street, because I don't think the newer residents realize it.
Yeah.
I try to explain to them that they're coming from.
But let's just keep that in mind. If we get more calls on it, we might have to do something about that. Okay? That wraps up my report. I just want to end by wishing everyone a very enjoyable and safe holiday season. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. DePlecky. Happy birthday, sir.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, everybody.
Thirty-nine. Thirty-nine, Charles.
No.
Thirty-eight.
Sixty.
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 I believe so.
Good evening, council, residents of the borough. Let me get these glasses here so I could see. Again, I say this every month, please do not hesitate to call 911 if you smell smoke in your house. The chief mentioned the three incidences. The one was a fire alarm they couldn't stop us. Madison Drive was 20 minutes delay. The lady looked for the fire, the smoke in her basement. Susan Lane, 10 o'clock in the morning, we got the call at 3:00. Do not hesitate to call 911, please, if you smell smoke in your property.
Yep.
Thank you. I say it every month, don't hesitate. Give them my name. I don't care. I spoke with Dave Evans, stop me, I spoke with Dave Evans. We're going to change the chain at the access road at the ball field between Summit, that access road for the fire trucks coming off of Cambridge and Marshall. Going to take that chain down, put something decorative up there.
That's good.
So we were up there, we looked at it, everything's good.
Can we do it from the other side as well? Because we have the one chain, but people...
That chain's coming down on the Summit side. Just going to put something decorative up there, barricade it, clean it up a little bit, that chain's terrible.
Can we do something on the other side, closer to the parking lot, because there's...
We can do anything we want, we have the money.
Because the people are still accessing that area as well.
Correct, they have that temporary fence there.
Yeah.
So maybe Dave could talk to Dave about getting something decorative there, but it's going to be like a little quarter turn barricade, so other fire companies can get through. We'll talk to you real quick afterwards. Sure. Not a problem. Again, use only approved UL lighting for the decorations on your house. Be careful what those gray trucks that deliver in, they're coming from out of the country, they're not all UL approved.
Does it state, does it state that it's UL approved?
Some of it does, some of it doesn't, depending where it's coming from.
So how would you know? How would we know?
There's going to be a little label on there, says UL approved.
Got it.
Okay?
Thank you.
The burn ban will be lifted on the day of infamy, December 7th. Okay? This is a concern of mine, maybe we'll get 2701 or 2742, whatever his number is. There's a homeless guy living on the side of the Autozone in that pickup truck. It's kind of a little dangerous situation over there. If anybody saw it over there, he's got all kinds of combustibles all around his vehicle, in his vehicle, not a good scene. Maybe we better get that cleaned up.
There's actually a cord that runs from his truck to the Autozone.
I seen it. So we'll get that taken care of. And again, happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody. Be safe. Thank you. Thank you, Charles.
And that opens second public discussion. Anyone for a second public discussion?
My name's John Pacilio, in Grant Drive. I'm just calling, coming up here tonight. I know you guys are not doing a tax increase next year. However, our council in Delaware County is $76 million in debt, and is going to be increasing by 28 to 30% this year. Now, what I would like to know is, is anyone from our Borough Council going to these meetings, upcoming meetings, and discussing your frustration with their inability to budget money? And representing the Brookhaven residents here? Yes or no?
I have not, but I can attend that.
I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
Because I think it's time, the Borough councils in our area, whether it's Brookhaven, Aston, or whatever, need to stand up against the council that can't manage money, because it's affecting everybody, not just you, everyone here in this room. And I think it's a valid concern that everyone here, no matter what side of the aisle you're on, should be looking into. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Very good. Thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention.
Hi, my name is Maria Amaladi. I live at 4843 Shepherd Street, and I called Dave DeLupe, and I've got the deers crossing our street, and the people are speeding so fast up and down Shepherd Street, it's unreal. And this young teenager hit this deer, and it died on my next-door neighbor's property. And the deers, they crossed over from my fire chief's house to his next-door neighbor's property, and then they crossed over on our property, on our side yard, and then they have babies too, in our backyard. And we have three baby fawns right now. And we like to know, we like to have the sign put up to save the deers and to save the life of the human beings that come down in the cars to save a life. Because somebody's going to get killed, and I don't want to see that. I mean, it was hard enough to see the deer die, and I just, I was really lucky to see that the young teenage driver was survived. And, but I called 911 right away. It's hard to talk about it, but something has to be done. Because I care about life, with the wildlife and the human life. And I really appreciate it, Dave, if you could put the sign up.
I'll do what I can, I'm going to see what it might cost and see what council believes.
I believe we can get the sign up, where you might...
And also with the speeding, with the drivers, my next-door neighbor has an autistic child, and she just runs out the door, and I have to yell, "Ava, stop!" And I'm afraid she's going to get hit by a car. And my mom and I, we tell her to stop, and she stops. And sometimes the cops, the people, they yell at my mom and I, and they say, "Is this your child?" And I go, "No." And I go, "It's my next-door neighbor's child." And so we tell our next-door neighbor, and he come running out with the father and the mother. And sometimes the parents don't even know she went out the door. And I just want to protect, you know, Ava, your worstie, and from getting hit by the car. Because there's children in our community also, and I don't want to see them get hit.
Thank you. We'll see what we can do, like Dave said.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, I'll certainly see what the cost of a sign might be.
And also, I have another concern. My mom and I do, my mom's here in the audience, and our neighbor that we always have problems with at 4829, they're very hardcore neighbors, and they have a pit bull dog, and they let it run at large, and it scares my...
Must be leashed at all times.
Oh, yeah, I know that. And it scares my two cats, and they run in the house for cover. And I'm afraid to sit outside, and so is my mom. And the dog attacked my next-door neighbor's dog this past summer, and he had to take him to the vet. And it ran after little Ava, Mike's daughter, the little one that has autism. And the mother got, she started getting real mad. I never saw Jenny get so mad. She went after the dog, and she tells to the dog owner, well, and my mom did too, and he says, "I'm not responsible for the dog." My mom goes, "Oh, yes, you are." Because the little girl came running on our property, and she hid behind our chair. And I just don't want Ava getting attacked by the dog or any other person, because it's a bulldog. And it's vicious. And...
Okay, Maria, I'll speak to the police department about some of your concerns, okay?
And you and the police officers are scared to death of these people.
Yeah. I was also scared of dogs myself.
And I am too.
I've been on the roof of people's cars multiple times.
But I, even though I'm Town Watch, but, you know, we try to be nice neighbors to these people. There's no, they're very hardcore, and you can't get nowhere with them. So, anyway, I just want to wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to have a birthday, Charlie, that's... And I'm 60 years old too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
And I really enjoyed seeing the Butterfly Gazebo all lit up. It's beautiful.
It is.
Public Works, thank you, Public Works, for that.
Take care.
Anyone else on public discussion?
I was following.
Tom, don't put him on the road. Well, here it is, the end of the year. Hard to believe in the calendar year. And Rec Board is coming, it's two last events for 2024. One is our senior luncheon this Sunday morning, or Sunday afternoon at 1:00. It is a ticketed event. If you have not picked up your ticket by today, I'm sorry, I can't have you come in. I have to give cater the numbers. So it's a, you know, it's been out there for five weeks, everybody knew about it. We have over 200 seniors coming, so it's fun. We do have entertainment that day, and there's a special visitor coming, just so people know. That evening at 6:00 on Sunday, the 8th, at 6:00, out back, we'll have our tree lighting service. The Coburn chorus will be here joining us, and they'll be having refreshments inside for everyone. And I'm not sure, chief, is there someone scheduled for that night? You know?
Yeah, the big guy's coming.
The big guy's coming, okay. So we're getting the big guy twice, just so you guys know. We're kind of, well, three times this month, right? Besides his own night. So we're pretty special here in town, so doing that. So from the Rec Board to everyone here, happy holidays, and looking forward to a 2025, full of things to do. Speaking of which, our first event is on Friday, January 3rd. It's our snowball dance for fifth and sixth graders here in the gym. And it's any student from Pendelco, Christian Academy, Holy Family over in Aston, anybody that... If you have a fifth or sixth grader, or you know someone who lives in town, or Aston or Parkside, tell them about it, let them know. It's $10. It's for two hours, from 7 to 9. They get pizza, soda, music, dancing, whatever they want, you know, that kind of stuff. We do have volunteers. And if you want to volunteer, we'll take as many volunteers as possible to doing that. It's a big, big event for doing it for kids. So that'll be where we're going first, okay? So thank you all for a great 2024, and we're looking for an even better 2025 for everybody. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else for public discussion? Anyone else? That leads us to adjournment. I have a motion.
I do have one more thing, I'm sorry. I do want to introduce, oh, where did he go?
He left.
Oh, he left. I wanted to introduce Steven.
I was considering January.
Oh, okay. I wanted to introduce Steven, but we'll have to wait until January.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, so moved.
Hold the second.
Justin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, that's correct.